Blood of the Legion, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated, if you would, please turn yourself close to silent. Ms. Fowler, real call.
Councilmember Preston.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Broton, excused absence. Councilmember Varner.
Present.
Vice President Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Boardy.
Present.
Councilmember Furlett.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you, report on subcommittee events, please.
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 24th, 2017, meeting of the council and found them to be correct, therefore we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Special business, Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading to 1728?
Seventeen twenty-eight, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, publicly commending and honoring Vice Chancellor Karen L. White for over forty-two years of devoted service and commitment to the students of Indiana University, South Bend.
At this time, we're going to change up the routine a little bit, Ms. White, would you please go down to the podium, and would her family members please join her? This presentation is by the majority of this common council, and we'll read it from here. "A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, publicly commending and honoring Vice Chancellor Karen L. White for over forty-two years of devoted service and commitment to the students of Indiana University, South Bend."
Whereas Karen L. White is originally from Buffalo, New York, and she relocated to South Bend at an early age. She attended Harrison Elementary School on South Bend's west side and graduated from Central High School. Ms. White received her bachelor's degree in psychology and social work from Indiana University, Terre Haute, and her master's in education from Indiana University, and...
Whereas, on September 1st, 1974, Karen joined Indiana University's South Bend staff as a counselor, and after forty-two years of exemplary service, Karen White will retire. And whereas Karen's road to community service began while she was a high school student and has continued throughout her college and professional life, and...
Whereas, service to family, community, and education are the hallmarks of Karen L. White's journey, and she is a firm believer in thought and indeed in the tenet as stated by Marian Wright Edelman. Services rent we pay from the living. She is the only African American who has served both as president of the South Bend Community School Corporation, board of directors, and as president of the South Bend Common Council, and...
Whereas, Ms. White is a proud alumni of Indiana University, South Bend, and has served in various capacities for over forty-two years. From her beginning days as a counselor, frequently recognized for exemplary administrative leadership skills, Karen has served in many key administrative roles, and whereas she became Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and Directors of the Freshman Division in 1989. In 2000, she began to serve as Assistant Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs and Dean of Students. She was also asked to serve as interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and Enrollment Management from July 1 to October 31, 2017. Then she became Director of Summer Leadership Academy in 2008, and has continued to serve in that role for many years since. From her appointment in 2005 until today, Karen holds the position of Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Services and Dean of Students, and...
Go Gavin.
Go Gavin.
Whereas, her greatest joy remains her ability to work with students. She has taught the university life seminar for nearly a decade. The students in her seminar, numbering in the hundreds, have all graduated. She has always said that they, and every student, are her babies, and she would have them, quote, "for life." Those statements have proven true, as many of the children of those students have become mentored and guided by Karen.
Whereas, Ms. White has received numerous awards and honors for her many civic and public services, including the E. Ross Bartley Memorial Award presented by Indiana University in recognition of meritorious and extraordinary administrative and supportive services, and the 2012 Charlie Nelmes Alumni Award for her dedication to ensuring access and success of students at IUSB, and...
And now, therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of South Bend as follows. One, section one, the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana publicly honors and congratulates Karen L. White on her integrity, knowledge, and commitment to service. Throughout her tenure at Indiana University, South Bend, she has served generations of students with grace. Also, section two, although Karen will continue to serve the residents of South Bend in various capacities and the common council, wishes Karen the best as she begins the next journey in her life and retirement. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor. So, thank you Karen for everything that you have done right now, and take comments from council.
Congratulations, and I hope you enjoy retirement.
Yeah, you're unbelievable. Even though I've been around a long time, I've still got a lot to learn, and you're the kind of person that I learned from, so thank you very much.
Thank you for all your wisdom, and I'm glad to continue to be able to work with you on the council. I also got a chance to work with you at IUSB, so it's been an honor to have you in my life.
Yeah, it's been about, I think eighteen years we've been on the council together, and if I had to share that eighteen years with someone, it would be someone like you, because we've been able to get together on things, have your disagreements, but by and large, I think we're looking out for the same thing, and that's a great trait that you have, and it's been great to work with you.
Karen, it's truly an honor to know you and to work with you. There's not a more caring, thoughtful public servant anywhere, and I appreciate all you've done for me and our community. Congratulations.
Karen, a lot has been said that is so true, and I just want to thank you for being a role model, for really being somebody I could go to in this new role on the council. I find you, as often people say, very even-tempered, but I've also noticed, being up here with you, you're also pit bull. So I've seen that behind the scenes, and I really do appreciate that. Thank you so much, congratulations, look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you Karen, like I said, at IU, you know, my first year on council, I sat next to you for a reason, and that was because you're my mentor, whether you liked it or not. But I sat next to you because I learned so much from you in this position that I take very seriously, and I appreciate that, you know, I've learned like all other people have learned, so thank you for being able to work with you all these years and much, much more. So, this time, turn it over to you and your family, if you'd like to say anything.
I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you, I'm so glad that this is the end, it has been a wonderful two weeks, I have been very uncomfortable, but I do appreciate all of your awards, your acknowledgement, but most importantly, having the opportunity to work with each and every one of you, and it's been a joy, I look forward to the upcoming years, and I will continue to do my best to do the job that I've been elected to do. So thank you so much, thank you.
Sir. At this time, anybody else from the public or the family would like to say something?
Family.
Nope.
Weren't prepared, but I thank you for taking care of her, because she often takes care of everyone, people at IUSB, people in the city, especially us, our family members, so I thank you for supporting her in everything that she does.
Great deal, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish, come up and speak in favor of this special resolution?
Senator Brown, 222 East Navarre Street, Bobby Lemian, and there is not enough time to sell the day if you want to sit back there and shoot him off, and I hope that they will hear your comment, she can get some rest, because I know everybody's still trying to call her, so you don't really go into retirement, I know what you call it, but I just hope you just enjoy yourself, because we are, we all do, I know I have.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Deborah Walker, 639 Diamond Avenue, to my sister Karen, thank you, thank you, thank you, you are such a great person and a great mentor, and we can do it without you, I'll let you.
137 East Indianapolis, South Bend, Karen White, met you as a young kid.
Yeah, I was a baby.
Yeah, from the same church, always a pillar. You have, you have set a standard within our community of leadership, and me as a pastor, we really appreciate the times that you have guided us and helped us become successful in our ministry. South Bend, the school has lost a major, a major piece of the puzzle, but now I pray that you relax and enjoy life more, and continue to do the things that you do behind the scene to make everybody better, and so, Mark Karma, we really appreciate you, and me as a pastor, we love you, and I continue to create work with you always, make Allen's a blessing.
Appreciate you.
Make a motion to adopt?
Is there anybody who wish to speak against? Would you please register with the police chief in the bathroom? Seeing none.
Motion to adopt the acclamation.
Second.
All in favor. All opposed. Someone for it. Are you sure, is there one more thing left? Okay, thank you all. We, at this time, do not have any report from city offices, I see Susannah Fritzberg is in the audience, representing the mayor's office. Now entertaining motion to rise and joint committee of the whole. All in favor. All opposed. Come down.
Might as well. The committee of the whole is now in session, this is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, you will have an opportunity to either speak in favor or against, your comments for each bill will be limited to five minutes. With that, would the city clerk please read 4517?
Forty-five seventeen, public hearing on an ordinance to vacate the following described property, the first north south alley, west of Laurel Street, running from Jefferson Boulevard to the first east west alley, and north from Jefferson Boulevard to the first east west alley.
Is there a committee report, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Public Works and Property Vacations Committee met earlier today and gave this a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, is there a presenter, please state your name and address.
I'm Carl Edmondson, I live at 1102 West Jefferson. We actually also own the sites at 1042 West Jefferson and 1035 West Jefferson, which we're maintaining, the 1035 is a park space, just green space is a community park, and at 1042, we're planning on digging a new foundation, actually moving our house from 1102 over to that, and keeping our 1102 spot as raised deck garden. So this shows the two alleys that we were looking to vacate, I think the main concern that anybody might have would be access to the neighborhood, and as you can see here, Maple Street, Laurel Street, kind of bookend the whole thing, and it's only 600 feet to either of those streets, there's 300 feet to the west is another alley that will give you access to either of those east-west alleys that are there. These are some pictures of the actual alleys, so the one on the left is the alley facing north towards Washington, and the one on the right is going close to south. So basically, to the left of the north-facing alley is where the park is, and we're basically trying to maintain pedestrian access and safety, where cars drive through these alleys rather quickly, we have a lot of kids who like to go into this park and play there, we hear parents all the time say, "Stop at the alley," because they're concerned about, you know, traffic coming through, there's no signs or signals or anything, so people blow past where the sidewalk is, and it just goes straight, same thing on the south-facing alley. The alleys are not well-maintained, we've lived here for sixteen years, we've not seen the city actually do anything, the asphalt is crumbling. For the south-facing alley, once we move our house over to the east, we're going to keep our garage in that space as sort of maintenance shed for both the park across the street and for the raised deck garden. This is our house currently, and this is sort of our dream for that lot, and so, we're going to want to, you know, run water from our house across the alley, and just having that alley not be there would make that a lot easier and a lot safer. This is a picture of the park across the street, we've, in the last two years, we've planted 22 trees, we redid the sidewalk and the curb just this summer, this is sort of illustrative of, you know, the children that like to play in the park, and here's some more pictures, we actually curved the sidewalk around to maintain the older trees that are there, we've, every Tuesday, have been having neighborhood volunteers come out and help us move mulch and things like that, so mainly, we're just trying to, you know, maintain safety and access to these things. The last sort of idea, this is the north-facing alley, abuts the Civil Rights Heritage Center to the north, and you can see, when they redid that, they cut off the alley that actually went to Washington, and they built sort of the burned wall that we're hoping to talk to them about as possibly having pedestrian access from our neighborhood there, so this alley, we're going to kind of keep as a pedestrian walkway, and just try to maintain pedestrian access and safety. Am I missing anything? Nope. That's about it.
Thank you so much, any questions from council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to the public portion, anyone from the public portion to speak in favor?
Maurice McGee, 3525 West Jefferson Street, I live in a neighborhood on Thomas, which is a parallel street, that abuts against Adle for 21 years, and on Jefferson, direct across street from them for six years, and across the street on Jefferson, another three or four years, so I'm very familiar with the neighborhood and their efforts. I have intimate reasons of why I think the council should grant this vacation, one of which I mentioned is that the community, bringing the community together and the neighbors, and giving access for the children to get to the park without having to worry about crossing the alley. Rehearing Carl said, it hasn't been maintained by the city, so it's actually kind of dangerous with the broken asphalt. But the other reason I did mention earlier, and I'll see if I can get back to it, is because my five-year-old still lives next to the alley, in the one shirt, in the park. In addition to the number of children that live within two or three houses of him, they all unionize at every time, so I just ask the council to approve this vacation, thank you.
Seeing no one else in favor, is there anyone, oh, I'm sorry, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Alan Lark, and I live at 1016 West Washington Street, and I'd just like to say, I think that the park already has made a huge impact on our neighborhood. I moved into the neighborhood in 1985 on West Washington Street, and I always thought that the Jefferson-Tomas Napier area, that is south of us, was a little bit of a dangerous Back in the, back in the late eighties, frequently we would hear gunshots in the evening, and as that has tapered up, and has actually transformed over a period of years, now it seems that that has gone away. Nevertheless, the thing that really convinced me that the neighborhood was on the upswing was when I finally walked down my back alley and saw that the Edmondsons had actually transformed a large area of the street, cleared up the alley, and now it seems like the neighborhood is actually a neighborhood. And so, emboldened by this idea, I actually then bought a property on Thomas Street, which is right across from where Maurice's grandma still lives right now, and so, I'm intending to stay and help to build and maintain the neighborhood. I think that is, what the Edmondsons have done has been the kind of thing that is profoundly encouraging for other people to do that as well. It looks great, the kids use it, that, this photograph that we're looking at right here is just from three days ago. We had a little party on the street, a lot of people came out, everybody was very happy about the park, I just think it's a great thing, and I hope that you find favor with the proposal, thank you.
We'll move now to people speaking in opposition. Please state your name and address.
My name's Neil Andrew Snyder, I own the property of 1029 West Jefferson Boulevard and the property of 1032 West Jefferson Boulevard, and Carl has done a nice job in fixing up the neighborhood, and we all appreciate it, but my understanding is that that park is actually private property, and he is actually fixing up his property, I don't know that it's public, for the public to be able to just go in and use that park, it seems to me like it's a private piece of property, which is funny. I'd like to read from the Bible, Solomon was the wisest and the wealthiest man that ever lived, and he said in Proverbs chapter 28...
Please, please keep your comments relevant to alley vacation.
Proverbs 22 and 28, it says, "Remove not the ancient landmark which thy fathers have set." What that means is that our forefathers, in their wisdom, understood that there needed to be an alley in that place, and they placed it there. If this alley is for the benefit of the community as a whole, then that's great, and if you need to remove it to benefit the whole city, then that's fine, so if Facebook is going to come in and build a giant office and they need that alley, then fine, but if it's a alley to benefit Mr. Carl Edmondson, then that's a different story altogether, if we're going to cause that alley to be just for his benefit. Now for me, I've got to drive all the way down to Maple Street, and then turn right or turn left, in order to come all the way back to the east, which is an additional quarter-mile drive every single day, which adds up to about ninety miles a year. drive every single day, which adds up to about 90 miles a year in extra driving because that alley's no longer gonna be available. In addition to that, I just found out about this thing, and I spoke to 16 of the neighbors. And they all said that they are not in favor of having that alley closed. Here's a copy of the signatures. So we need that alley. You know, if the city's not maintaining it, that's another issue. This becomes personal private property of Carl and adds on to his real estate collection on the street, and it doesn't benefit the city as a whole. And I strongly object to the alley, and I would like to urge the council to leave it the way it is, all the neighbors that I've spoken to. I had one or two of them were neutral, but 16 people signed the objection. They're not happy about the alley being closed. They use it, I use it, reuse it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Is that the close of your comments, sir?
Let's close my comments. We need the alley. 16 other people signed a piece of paper saying they do not want that alley closed. I didn't have time to ask everybody in the whole city, I just asked the people on Jefferson Street.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Back to the council?
We're done.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The petitioner has five minutes to rebut.
Yeah, the point of order, the gentleman stated he owned the two properties, but didn't give his actual address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please state your actual address?
Home address, for the record.
You can just state it from right there, they can hear you.
Yeah, I think they're being recorded. So I own, I bought and rehab the property of 1029 West Jefferson Boulevard.
Just state your address, please. Your address.
1029 West Jefferson Boulevard.
Perfect.
And 1032 West Jefferson Boulevard. I own both properties.
Where do you live, sir?
Which one is your address?
My home address is 1029 West Jefferson Boulevard.
Perfect, that's what we need. Thank you so much. With that, five minutes for rebut.
My name is Megan Edmondson. I live at 1102 West Jefferson, and I'm one of the petitioners for this bill. I'm saddened to hear that there were neighbors responding negatively to the suggestion of closing the alley. We were issued a radius map and given addresses that we generated mailings from to 28 addresses within that 150 radius, foot radius. And everyone that we spoke to that received those letters were very excited about it, especially the parents of younger children to the north of us. I would like to point out that Mr. Snyder's address, if you see 1035, the park there, his house is the one to the right of the park. And directly east of him is a north-south throughway drive that belongs to the group home there that I believe Ocon and Heritage Center partnered on. And in regards to, I'm not quite sure where the shortcut to Thomas Street is saving time. Perhaps you're talking about going down to Western to exit the neighborhood, but if there is some concern about accessing the rear of his property or exiting in a different route, perhaps he could speak to the group home about utilizing that. And I'd also like to be aware of who is not supported. I'd like to state the names and the addresses if possible.
Does she get a copy?
Yeah. She can get a copy, it's on the record.
Well, I hope you've considered all the options there. Thank you.
No questions at this time, thank you. So back to council members for comments or for a motion.
Yeah, I need a clarification. What's her name?
Megan.
Megan, I'm sorry, Megan. You said, or the gentleman lives right over here?
We can get the backup.
Yeah, she can help me clarify, because I need some clarification.
I think there's a point around that.
He?
We agree. He lives at this address.
So basically...
So he was actually outside the radius map, that house.
I understand. So he doesn't necessarily, around his house, the alley's not a necessary issue around his house. Is that also correct?
That's correct. The alley, so his house is here, and the north-south alley is right here.
So he has alleys all around his house, that affected your situation?
Right. And so, he could literally drive down to the end of the block at Maple or Laurel to exit the neighborhood.
So he doesn't need all those 90 miles that he talked about from that standpoint?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
I had to point out, again, 600 feet to Laurel, 600 feet to that, 300 feet to the other alley. It's 25 feet from his house to the, we drive to the north. It's actually only 200 feet from his house to Laurel. I'm not sure.
I understand. I thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council at this time? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I need to make a comment.
I make a motion to send this bill to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion does carry. City clerk, would you please read 4617?
That is not my alley. One on the...
Sir?
This is probably wrong.
4617, "A public hearing on an ordinance of the common council amending the, the city of South Bend, amending Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 13-75.5 of the South Bend Municipal Code to add dealing in a synthetic drug look-alike substance to the list of prohibited activities constituting a disorderly house."
The committee report, please.
The Health and Public Safety Committee accepted the substitute version of 4617 for consideration and gave it a favorable recommendation. Understand that there is a second substitute that needs to be acted upon.
Is there a motion to accept the second substitute?
The move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Is there a presenter? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Karen Elway. I live in the 1912 Melphorn Way in the city of South Bend.
Tim Scott, Southern Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Councilmember Scott and myself were happy to bring before the council the second substitute bill that deals with synthetic drugs. We'd like to say that on January 15, 2017, a number of city employees and others witnessed the impact of synthetic drugs on three young men at that time. And it was the chief of police who actually met with the South Bend Democratic Coalition, and they will be part of the presentation as well, to really bring to their attention the impact of this very serious public safety issue within our community. From there, a number of community organizations and social service agencies really came together to talk about how we as a city can respond to this particular issue within our city. So part of our presentation tonight will include the chief of police, Scott Erskowski, who's the last to join us at this time. Also, Kim Green Reese, who's part of Beacon Health program at Houseville, she's gonna be joining us. And also, Robert Smith, who is part of the senior men club that held a town hall meeting to begin to really ensure that the community became more aware of this particular public safety issue. Likewise, there was a press conference that was held during the month of February that began to pull together not only community leaders, but others to come together collectively to address this issue. This shows that when individuals do come together, we have a common purpose that we can bring about some change to really begin to address this issue. Likewise, from the mayor's office, we had Shay Davis, Sherri Peet, and our home city clerk, Karima Fowler, who has been with us every step of the way. So at this time, council member Tim Scott will give a brief overview of the ordinance, and then I will share some general information. And then those who are part of the presentation will give you additional information in regards from a public safety perspective, from a health perspective, but also to share with you the number of resources that we have in this community that we can begin to educate not only at the high school and to K through 12 levels, but also to ensure that our parents are aware of the impact of synthetic drugs.
Thank you, Karen. Things that we would like to state about this bill is the fact that this is devastating to our community. We've seen people from elementary, school age, all the way up to 78-year-olds being affected by this and being in the emergency room. And there's some numbers that are gonna be coming on the side of the emergency room. What we're trying to do here, and I also want to thank Bob Palmer and Aladeen DeRosa, they're legal expertise on this, as well as Chief Erskowski. This wasn't easy for us to look at. We've changed some of the language in the second version, the substitute version. It's a look-alike marijuana or cannabinoid substances. It's constantly changing, and what we want to do is we've included that term "look-alike", and we've kind of described that because it's constantly changing, because the people making this junk is really trying to do whatever they can to get around the loophole. And too many people have different expectations, thinking that this is truly something that is all right, it's legal, I can have an experience off of it, which it really isn't. And in 2014, state Indiana has categorized those synthetic look-alike drugs. We're trying to keep pace with it. And what it's doing is adding to our disorderly house ordinance. And when people say disorderly house, they think just a home, but no, this deals with individuals selling this as well as businesses. That disorderly house is your business. And we know businesses, you know, have been involved with this stuff in the past. And what we want to do is send the message, while there is a criminal aspect to this, this is also a civil penalty put on by the city that is there to get attention. The fines range from $250 to $2,500. And the reason that is, is we know there are circumstances on the individual side that might mean a lower fine or something to do with that, that it gives some liberal leeways for the attorney and the city to look at individual cases. But what I'd really like to see is the $2,500 that we have in there. That's the most the city can impose by state, and I hope that's sending the message to the commercial entities that are out there that are gonna try to promote and sell this. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Cox for him to...
Press that.
I'm sorry? Yes, Chief, I'm sorry. I apologize. Chief Erskowski. Chief Cox actually chatted on this as well, so gotta give him a little bit of credit. But Chief Erskowski, on some of the perspective of the police department.
Thank you. Erskowski, 701 West Sample Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46601. And that is my more time there than I do in my actual house, just for, I know I say it to everyone, but I literally mean that. Education and awareness, that's, I know this shocks people, but that's what we as the police department believe, that's what we need to be broadcasting. Education and awareness, first and foremost. Secondly, voluntary compliance. The majority of these are businesses, small businesses, munchy mark type things, small that we all familiar with. And there are components where they're being possibly distributed out of houses, cars, school grounds, et cetera. Not necessarily anything in that order, but understand that that is being done. And I look over the numbers, and I'm seeing 555 where it says cannabis use unspecified. And that, I'm sure I'm not speaking on behalf of the health industry, but I can assure you, my best guess is that's at least 555 people that we know about. What about the ones we don't know about? What if there weren't a bunch of witnesses that the mayor and others had saw that day coming out of church? What if? And there's a whole bunch of those what ifs that nobody ever reports. They don't make it to the hospital, they don't notify the police department. And I think, I know that the police department isn't willing to take chances if we can do something to prevent it. So first and foremost is people voluntarily complying to not do bad things to other people. That would be optimal. Secondly, if they don't, and there's a chance for redemption here, we have a civil penalty that we could use now, that we haven't had it be able to use before. And lastly, is a criminal penalty, civil and criminal. We don't want to have to do that. We don't want to have to put somebody through a court proceeding. And quite frankly, either a fair or unfair shake in our judicial system. Hopefully, that compliance comes in the first mode where we can sit down and talk and advise people of the dangers of this. Everybody's heard about it, we've seen it. And last but not least, I ask the council to please keep in mind, and I know I said this at committee earlier, but there are police officers, there are firefighters and medics that have to deal with these constantly. It's not the people that you see in the courtroom or afterwards when they're walking out of the hospital after being discharged. It's the people who are violent, some who are totally in almost a comatose state, very combative, and somebody has to deal with the people that we deal with. And that is us, we're the ones. So the police, fire, and medics are dealing with this on a constant basis, and it's just, it's not a matter of if, it's already happened, and we've already seen it. And how many of the question marks that we don't, that did not survive, that we didn't know what the actual causes are? And a lot of times, we may never know what those causes are, but I can bet you, at least one of them had to do with this. So I would appreciate the council would please pass as intended.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Green Reese. My home address is 50555 Galaxy Drive in Grandeur. I am representing today Beacon Health System. We have what is called a community health needs assessment that we conduct every three years. And out of the community health needs assessment, the community members fill this out, we have secondary data that we attribute to the overall priority areas, and then also key informants, so those that work very closely with community members in various capacities. Synthetic marijuana use has come about out of our priority, violent safety trauma. So with that said, I know that each of you should have the data in front of you, but I will go ahead and cover some of that as I've been directed by Mrs. White. Community Health at Beacon Health System believes the following hospital data can help to inform us to make better decisions moving forward. So pulling this data was very important for us. I should mention that this data is representative of our primary diagnoses code. So what they come into the hospital for initially, however, that does not cover secondary codes. And so that being said, if an individual is hurt because they used synthetic marijuana, that would come up, the use of it will actually be the secondary cause. And so I'm happy to pull those numbers if needed. That being said, moving forward, there were 981 visits to the ER Memorial Hospital, South Bend, in 2016. Out of that, 398 were termed or identified as abuse. 28 dependents, and dependents is that they depend on the use of synthetic marijuana. And so, this is not something that's a one-time use, it's something that they have come in for and said that they rely on this. And then finally, unspecified cannabis use. And as the chief mentioned, unspecified, meaning we can't really pinpoint exactly why they have, or what the cause of them coming into the hospital could be. It's possible that it's abuse, it's an overdose, or it's possible that they're dependent. But for the diagnoses codes as it relates to the healthcare system, there's not a specific area for that, so we have to enter them as unspecified. Moving forward, out of the 981, 538 were male, 443 were female. As you can see, the race and ethnicity vary. We have 525 of those diagnosed at white, 377 black, 45 Hispanic, 20 other, and 14 unknown. The age also ranged from 13 to 19 all the way to 50 plus. As you can see, 13 to 19, 168 diagnoses. 20 to 29, 318. 30 to 39, 180. 40 to 49, 129. And 50 and older, 186. So as I mentioned before, it is our main goal to take this data and make informed decisions moving forward. I truly believe that having an ordinance will help us address the emergent needs in the community at this time. Thank you very much.
Robert Smith. I'm with the Martin Luther King Senior Men's Club, which is located at 1226 Linden. One of the things in the neighborhood we see is that young kids, meaning those 13 to 16, they are preyed upon by people selling these synthetic drugs. The kids seem to get the idea that if I can do this, I will be like my older siblings, or like the people I've seen on TV. In one area at the King Center, there are after-school programs for kids. Some of the kids have to be taken aside in order that they can be calmed down, or that they can be given attention to, just because they are in such a state of mind that they can't really concentrate on the after-school activities that they're going to be doing. Some kids don't have the energy, like they come in almost as though they are in a comatose state, you know? So the drug has a, has an effect that it makes some of the children comatose-like, and with other kids, like it makes them very active. But in either case, these kids cannot be put in activities with the normal kids, you know? There's also a organization that the county has that deals with all types of substance abuse. It's called Partnership for the Education and the Prevention of Substance Abuse. Now, they get their funding from the state drug court, but the funding is not enough. But in this case here, we aren't here to talk about funding. The ordinance that you're looking at will be a very important tool that can be used just to stop the people who are preying upon kids. Kids that age don't understand the effect that the drug will have on them. There are people who hang around these centers where children live, and they prey on them. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them later.
We would like to thank all of our presenters. There will be others that will be coming before the council to speak in favor of this particular second substitute bill, but we do ask for your support as we move forward. This is a very important public health issue. And again, I just can't speak in terms of values, those who have come together, different organizations, individuals, that to really move this forward. And we'd like to thank everyone who has taken a part to bring it to this point at this time.
Are there any questions from council at this time?
One question. Could you just clarify again the strength of, if somebody wants to challenge and say, you know, when you enforce this rule, what would be the strength of the legality regarding the strength of the ordinance?
That'd probably be something more for attorney to weigh in on, however, again, this is a civil component as opposed to a criminal component. And obviously, the necessity for having the criteria for one over the other is a little bit less when it comes to civil. However, I can tell you as a police department, we will still operate on a minimum of reasonable suspicion and emphatically on probable cause or higher. So that's what we'll do, even with that, it would take the same thing that we'd use essentially for criminal, for a criminal component. So if the fire department, for example, were to be on a run and notice something that didn't seem right concerning the synthetics, they would notify us. That's a good faith belief, that they believe that this place is selling or distributing these items that are obviously harmful and dangerous to our community, notify us, and we would be able to intervene, whether it's a permit, whether it's a search, a permit to search, or a search warrant. And one thing, and I'm glad you asked that, because I was remiss just briefly, there's a draft form right now that we're all working on, especially the council and committee, working on a promise to keep our community safe. There's no title to it, it's having a synthetic drug community protection agreement. That's kind of lengthy and wordy. Hopefully, with your expertise on the council, you can come up with something a lot more abbreviated than that, that makes sense. But essentially what it is, is just bullet points, promising that you're not going to distribute this harmful stuff, that nobody really knows what's contained in there, to our community from ages 13 to 50-plus. It's dangerous, it's threatening us, and it's potentially killing us. And that's, we're working on that now. That wouldn't probably fall right into the ordinance itself, but it's another measure of awareness and education that we can use and hold people accountable to promise that they're not going to do these things, and then we can take those other steps.
And I would just like to add, to Vice President Davis, this falls under the disorderly house ordinance, where either code, police, anybody who would see any type of violation to this could issue that kind of, you know, ticket or violation, and it would be investigated. Where you have the legal side prosecuting attorney and through the county, they can do their thing on it as well as this on the civil side, which legal, it would go through legal, go through the channels of evidence from the police or code enforcement or whoever to do that, and then move forward on the civil penalty. I think the one thing is, this needs to send a message that it can't be solved here, and we all know that there's been repeat issues of that happening, where these people are habitual in doing that, so that evidence can't be built. Does that help?
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from council, we'll open it up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Deborah Walker. I live at 639 Diamond Avenue, and I'm the president of the St. Joe County African American Democratic Coalition. And I'd just like to say that I'd like to thank the chief for coming to us and helping me get a group of people in the community to come to work on this ordinance. It's real important that we pass this ordinance. I was present the day those young men became healed from that particular drug, and I feel that your support is very much needed. Thanks to Karen and the council, Tim Scott for working on this ordinance. We need this. And what I've seen because of this is that how we have come together to work on and make our city better. So we need your support in doing so. Thank you.
My name is Sandra Brown. I live at 222 East Navara Street. I have a workshop group of 60 men for the government. And once again, hoping to come in to ask you to pass the ordinance to make our community stronger. You are the leaders of our community. And anytime our leaders see something, whether it's the police chief, fire chief, or the community, it's up to you to hear the voice of the people. If you pass this, it's only a start. I mean, we got to start somewhere. So we're counting on you leaders to help us tonight and do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Anyone else speaking in favor? Seeing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public portion is closed. Is there a motion from the council?
We'd like to send 4617 to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second?
Second substitute.
Second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. With that, I will entertain a motion to rise and resolve and review the whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, third reading to 4517?
4517, third reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley, west of Laurel Street, running from Jefferson Boulevard to the first east-west alley, and north from Jefferson Boulevard to the first east-west alley.
Motion for passage.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Third reading for 4617, please.
4617, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 13-75.5 of the South Bend Municipal Code to adding dealing in a synthetic drug look-alike substance to the list of prohibited activities constituting a disorderly house.
Motion for passage. Second?
I'm sorry, do we need to accept the, sorry, motion to accept the second substitute?
Some of, yeah, this is what was written in the community. That's some of what I'm not into. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Motion for passage of the second substitute?
Second again?
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Vorti?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlett?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. There are no resolutions at this time. We'll move to Bill's first, on first reading. Ms. Fowler, would you give first reading to 4717, please?
4717, first reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described property. The southern portion of the north-south street, east 213 feet of East Right-Away of South Taylor Street, and running south 250th Street from South Right-Away of Western Avenue, to include a portion running 34 feet from the west Right-Away of Williams Street to South Right-Away of South Williams Street.
I'd like this be sent to the Public Works and Property Vacation Committee for a second reading and public hearing on 8/28.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4817, please.
4817, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending a section of Chapter 2, Article 6 of the South Bend Municipal Code pertaining to tax abatements.
Entertain motion, send this to...
Move the 4817, be sent to DCI, second, third reading, public hearing on 8/28.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 4917, please.
4917, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Section 4-51 of Chapter 4, Article 4 of the South Bend Municipal Code pertaining to licensing and regulations of scrap metal, junk dealers, valuable metal dealers, and recycling operations.
I move that this be sent to the Personnel and Finance Committee and set for a second reading and public hearing on 8/28.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, unfinished business. I would entertain the following motion. One, submission by the Historic Preservation Commission to file certified copies of the minutes and all documents of the record regarding action taken by the staff and commission on the COA application number 2017-0602A. This is in regards to the Boyd versus Historic Preservation Appeal that will become before us. They have three other parts of this motion. Number two, noon on Tuesday, August 22, 2017, to establish as the deadline for submission by the petitioner and his attorney for the evidentiary and administrative record. Three, noon on Tuesday, September 5, 2017, to establish as deadline for submission by the Historic Preservation Commission or by its legal counsel of evidentiary and administrative record. Four, that on Monday, September 11, 2017, at 7:00 PM, South Bend Common Council meeting under the unfinished business, that the council shall hear an appeal involving COA application 2017-0602A, Eric Boyd versus Historic Preservation Commission.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? On that note, as this is, you guys went through this once before, just to want to make a reminder that this is an appeal process. We are serving as a judicial body in this regard, so any communication with Mr. Boyd or Historic Preservation should not happen at all. It can't, to preserve our duty and judgment. They are supposed to come before us with evidence, and we're supposed to hear that as impartially as we can. I just want to make sure that's clear. Did I miss anything, Mr. Fowler? Okay, with that unfinished business is... Is there anything else unfinished business?
Unfinished business is finished.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
With our attorney, we'll come back to the, will that be new business?
That will be in two weeks.
That would be a resolution.
Okay, cool. I'm with you.
All right. Anything other unfinished business? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none. We will now turn over the privilege of the floor. This is where the common, this is where citizens can come and speak to the common council. You're given three minutes. I'll have Gavin Furlett keep that time, give you a one-minute exit warning. You cannot speak on anything that was on the agenda tonight, even Karenell White, is outflippant. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Sue Castle. I live at 4022 Kennedy Drive. I recently attended a public board of works meeting, and under our agreement, AMD Constructors LLC will be given $268,044.74 to install a chandelier for the Phantom of the Opera. It's up for a quarter of a million dollars to install a chandelier for a Broadway play. I just want to say as a citizen, that does not match my values. I think there's a lot of other things that we could spend $268,044.74 on.
Public works.
So as you're doing the budget, I hope that you'll keep in mind values of things that pertain to all citizens, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Brown, 222 East Navara Street, City of South Bend, I have a workshop group called CC9 for the Government. And one of the things I want to bring to the council tonight, sometimes you bring things that's not very popular, but let me clap the guy that you told back there. The LOP, General Teresa, International Sergeant, I'm not really pronouncing the other names, but anyway, he was saying that the mayor of City of South Bend don't support the Department of the Police Department. I don't feel that's right. And I really feel like this is something, it's quite mythological, and I appreciate it. I also, let my comment be known to the mayor, I would have liked to have talked to his officer, because there's challenges that you have to go through and try to do anything solid. And the first struggle is meeting the police chief. And I really feel that being the mayor of the City of South Bend, we have to support the police department. Simple as that. Because these other people, they're not safe, they love safety. So I feel resent, this article, resent field to the mayor of City of South Bend. I thought it could be done in a better way, in a more professional way, and I don't care who I'm feeling, I don't care who I'm upset, I'm telling you how I feel. I'm not a guy to stuff somebody in the back. I think our mayor got a hard enough job without him getting some scratch like this, covering his face. I do believe he could take, I do support our police department. We got citizens out there to support. I come all the time and tell them about his drug house. I support it, it's right across from my daughter's house. So I'm just going to say that, and no one made a real show that I made. I support our mayor, he's got a very difficult job, and I think that this could have been done in a more plastic way. And I don't care who I'm feeling, or who I get... done in a more plastic way. And I don't care who I'm feeling or who I get upset. I don't think our mayor deserves this. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Next name and address, please.
Thomas Bush, seventeen seventy-eight, Perry Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here tonight to, uh, talk about the, uh, South Bend of Swaggin Street. I live at the intersection of Perry and Swaggin, and been living there about twenty-five years. And I have talked to Councilman Davis on several occasions about getting, uh, what we have talked to him, about getting Swaggin paid. I mean, out of twenty-five years, I think it was upgraded one time, and it wasn't, you know, really paid then. Now, the South Bend of Swaggin, which has about, um, five houses on it, and it used to be a junkyard down there, and they paved that street. And I talked to Councilman Davis about three weeks ago. I was supposed to walk around the neighborhood and meet everybody, which I had a petition. Everybody signed to get the street, the street paved, but it started raining, so it got rained out, and he said he was coming back the following week, which he never showed. And this is about the third time that, uh, I brought something to his attention. He said he was going to take care of it, and, um, he never did. So, we still like getting the street paved. It was in bad shape, and she'll be taking care of it. All the streets around there practically have been taken care of. And this alley, uh, east of, uh, my house is, uh, I mean, it's got potholes in it, and a washout pit. He came over there and saw that, where it go right down to the streets, that he over there washed the clean out. That was taken care of. But the rest of the alley, I mean, it has potholes in it. We showed that to him, and...
Concern you have twenty seconds.
He says he'll return, but, you know, he never came back to do anything about it. So I want to talk to the enlarged folks. I mean, this wife, she won't lose love. Okay, I'll begin with that.
John Ford, the three right here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Matthews, five two one two seven, Ball Creek Drive, Ranger, Indiana. I am the manager of MAJCM LLC, and I'm here to give you an update on the Echoes Development located on the twelve-hundred block of North Ironwood, one of our first pocket neighborhood communities in the city. So, we started this process back in May. It was later tabled by the council, and as noted, we went back to the drawing board to see if we could develop a better project, which I think we've done. However, I'm not here to debate the benefits of the project. We can do that on August twenty-eighth. The, I'm here tonight to correct some of the misinformation and suggest, that suggests that we were not good neighbors, or that we've been disrespectful to the council. Since May, we've met with many city officials to design a project that is more conducive to the neighborhood. I've had the opportunity to share our current plan with many of you, and I hope to be able to share them with the rest of you. The following are a few of the misinformation items I'd like to correct. As a property owner, we've made several attempts to be part of the neighborhood communications. We thought it would be helpful to be part of the neighborhood group and asked if we could be included in their email distribution list. We were denied that. By the way, many of the remonstrators have mentioned that there's a neighborhood association. There's not a neighborhood association or a property owner in the neighborhood. I'd be happy to be part of it if that, if we had the opportunity. We did initiate demolition on, on buildings that were on the site. We determined that the best option was to demolish these buildings as they were vacant and they had been abandoned. Excuse me. One of the homes on the property was already vandalized after our purchase. We did not want them to become attractive nuisances where people would get hurt by cleaning them, vandalizing them, et cetera, so we tore them down. We did take down trees. Any development would require clearing the site. Some trees were truly distressed or diseased, while others, um, were old and placed in the middle of anticipated foundations or parking areas. But leaving them would be disruptive to any new development. The neighbors have been persistent in their comments about the trees. I, I don't think anybody other than somebody like Mike Blanch, who by the way has a landscape and architectural degree, would be qualified to talk about the tree, not even me.
Concern you have thirty seconds.
It is true that the number of the units has increased. However, what hasn't been mentioned in some of the news articles is that we've also purchased positional property since we had our meeting in May, and so that allowed us to do that. In summary, I personally have had regular communication with the neighbors through their designated point person. The communication has been consistent and comfortable, I think. I really don't understand some of the comments that they've made. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled later this week, right before the APC.
Concern your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Name and address.
Sheriff Nicky, thirty-eight twenty-two Ford Street. I am very upset with the mayor for turning down the ten thousand dollar request to put the homeless to work in the parks. I understand it was probably not going to be a wonderful solution, but it was a start. So I hope at budget time that none of the elected officials, appointed department heads or upper Bs have the audacity to ask for a ten thousand dollar raise, when that money could be better spent on the citizens who need it more than those that don't. There's nobody in the city that deserves a ten thousand dollar raise, so don't come looking for it because it's not going to happen. The citizens are watching. On the other hand, I've been following a Facebook post by Trishelle Nichols, who lives on the southeast side, three four, close to three fourteen Milton. She posted on Thursday, Friday, on my vocal, that she had a problem house. It was full of people that just moved in, moved on. They had furniture all over the front yard. She wasn't getting anywhere with the city. She went on my vocal, got guidance, and at eight o'clock this morning, the South Bend Police Department, ACO enforcement, showed up, cleared out, and cleaned up the property, and she couldn't be more pleased. I just want those that were involved, thank you. She's happy. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step on up.
My name is Don Dume. I live at twenty fifteen Peachtree Lane. I live right next to my daughter and her family, who share a southern boundary of the former church property that you just heard about. It may be painful for the council, but I'm going to bring you back to the last council meeting where we had the marathon discussion on the friendly confines bar. I wrote something down during that, that meeting, and I want to, I want to repeat it. It's actually, the attorney representing the friendly confines bar said the following, and I quote him, "I know that the primary concern of the council is the protection of the surrounding community." Let me repeat that. "I know that the primary concern of the council is the protection of the surrounding community." If that is true, it gives me hope, because in two weeks, we're going to be back in this room discussing the former church property. And we'll be there in force. I'm not without, I'm without my team today because we're preparing for the ABC merit meeting. We do have a meeting with the developer. That developer's, the developer meeting is long overdue. Maybe we're at different meetings on May twenty-second, but at the May twenty-second meeting, the developer's giving, giving one directive of three things to do. Meet with the neighbors before doing anything else. Get their input, gain some level of approval of the neighborhood. Secondly, incorporate that input into revised plan. And thirdly, bring that back in three weeks to present to the council before doing anything else. Since that time is about twelve, fourteen weeks ago, the property's been completely leveled. It strikes me, it strikes me as odd that you can buy a beautiful piece of property that's been occupied for the last forty years, and when you take ownership of it, you declare it to be vacant, and you expect that you're, then you level that property, you expect to be rewarded with preferential treatment, or rezoning condition, a longer list of variances. Now, the twenty-two recycling was rejected back on May twenty-second. They were told what to do. We all know that didn't happen. Instead, he submitted a revised plan and actually increased the number of houses. He did buy one additional house adjacent to the property, and he went from twenty-two to thirty. When I saw that plan, it was probably a bigger shock to me than waking up to the sounds of chainsaws and bulldozers in June. This was a bad plan with twenty-two houses.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Welcome to the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, everybody.
Oh, yeah, me. Um, give me... She has in.
Oh, we just gave it to Jen. Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, um, things came out.
Thanks, Graham.
Do you, uh, you happen to know who own your home? Cause that's when, it looks to know your, it was a Kineski family that lived over there? How about Turner? Dorit Hoff and Protector.